All right, welcome, everybody, to the July 24th City Council meeting of the Evanston City Council. City Clerk, if you would take the role, please.
Alderman Sufferton. Alderman Ravel. Alderman Rainey. Alderman Fleming.
Here.
Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Wynn. Alderman Wilson. Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Here.
We have a call.
All right, terrific, terrific. All right, well, welcome, everybody. Quick updates. Citizen Police Complaint Assessment Committee, we have had applications out, and we're calling for applications. The due date or the final date and deadline is this Friday, July 28th. So if you're interested in being on that, we have 21 applicants so far, but looking for anybody that's interested in being on the Citizen Police Complaint Assessment Committee, and you can find that on the city's website. I know we have a lot of artists in this room. I spent today at a new gallery that we have downtown at 1627 Sherman that had a ribbon cutting. Lots of local artists are there, and it's wonderful to have a new business here in town. So if you get the chance, 1627 is the pop-up gallery. There is going to be tomorrow night, if you're interested, in a less formal opportunity to talk with me and Alderman Wilson. We'll be at Temperance, the new saloon that they're doing tomorrow at 7:00 PM. Also, this Thursday, the Chamber of Commerce here in Evanston is going to do a session on the new Cook County minimum wage and sick leave. There's lots of questions that businesses have about the sick leave ordinance and making sure that they're complying with that. So that will be this Thursday, the 27th, at 6:00 PM at Rotary International. Don Baker, who many people here in this community know, who has done a lot for youth in this community, is having a street naming this Wednesday at 5:00 PM at 1027 Sherman, if you're interested in that. Two final things. On August 1st, from 5:00 to 9:00 PM, will be National Night Out, which promotes community and promotes law enforcement and the collaboration between the two. So if you don't have plans, please come out. There'll be events all over Evanston that night. And lastly, I'd like to recognize our city manager, who's sitting to my right, Wally Bobkowicz, who was just named to the Executive Committee of the International City Managers Association. So... It's a big deal, and it's something that everybody here in Evanston should be proud of, that our city manager is on that executive committee. So congratulations, Wally. Okay, with that, we'll turn it over to the city manager for any announcements.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. A few items. First, we have our annual presentation of our preservation awards. Carlos, are you going to start us off?
My name is Diane Williams, and I'm the Chair of Evanston's Preservation Commission. And I want to welcome Mayor Hagerty, the Honorable Members of the Council, the City Clerk, City Manager Bobkowicz, distinguished guests, members of the audience, and all of our fellow Evanston citizens to the 2017 Evanston Preservation and Design Awards. This year, we received 11 nominations for the awards program. A jury composed of Celeste Robbins of Robbins Architecture, Suzanne German of Landmarks, Illinois, and Andrea Terry of Bauer Latoza Studio volunteered to visit the sites of each of the nominations. And before I do anything, I want to thank all of them for their good work. After considering these 11 nominations, the jury selected five recipients of the 2017 Preservation and Design Awards. One of the things we're really excited about is tonight, for the first time, we have a short video of each of the award recipient projects. After the video of each project ends, representatives of that project will come forward to receive the award certificates from Mayor Hagerty, recognizing the owner, architect, and contractor. And if we can start the first video, which is for 1030 Forest Avenue.
So the purpose of the renovation was to take what had been an abandoned, an overgrown and dilapidated piece of Evanston's history, restore it as much as possible to its original condition, and to give it, say, another 100 years lease on life. The impact on the property and the community of the project was on a couple levels. First was there was just a simple tangible taking something that had been abandoned and overgrown and bringing it back. I think on a broader level, it was an example of what can be done when the city works cooperatively with private developers to find creative ways to develop and preserve pieces of history like this and pieces of culture, and not just make them preserved, but actually make them a living, breathing part of the community.
And the jury comment specific to this award was that it was a well-executed rehabilitation and restoration, considered of the original house without modernizing too much. And the award recipients are J&amp;S Home Renovations LLC, the owner, Eiflorin Associates, the architect, and Caston Holtz Construction Services, the contractor. And these folks were unable to be here tonight, so Carlos will make sure they get their awards. And thank you to them. Next is... Oh, go ahead. It's a great project. Next is 2518 Central Park.
The purpose of the alteration was to provide the Gomburgs with more living space in their truly remarkable house on Central Park Avenue. They had two bedrooms and one bathroom, and now they have three bedrooms and two bathrooms. And I think the addition complements rather than clashes with that original building, which is a landmark, and deservedly so. I think personally, the rear is as presentable as the front. I get that comment. I like to hear that comment, because then I know I've done a good job, you know, for my clients and people who look at my work for the first time.
The jury comment specific to this property was a thoughtful addition to the home while maintaining its scale, bold enough to step down the original design to respect the scale of the home. And the owners are A.J. and Carrie Gomburg, Gary Steiner, the architect, and Ian C. Builders, the contractor. Great. And the next award is for 1322 Lake Street.
The purpose of the alteration to this particular house was to replace a deteriorated old back porch. This house was built in 1865, and the back porch, while not original to that house, was certainly there for a very long time. Now it flows down into a backyard, and they have a patio back there. It really works much better in terms of the way it functions, but also, I think, in terms of the way it looks. The impact that this project had on that property and that house and the community around it really was to take a wonderful, beautiful vintage home, 1865 vintage home, and add an element to it that fit with it, that was really coordinated with the rest of the details in the home, so that it looks the same. It looks like it's always been there. That was very important to our clients and, I think, to the community.
And the jury comment specific to this project is the addition is above and beyond with the level of detail for a back porch. And the winners are John Colbert, the owner, Roberts Architects, the architects, and Roberts Construction, the contractor. And the next project is 1142 Judson Avenue.
So my husband and I had been looking for a home in southeast Evanston for about a year before we found our house. And we really love the historic nature of the neighborhood, and we wanted to be close to the lake and walkable to downtown. But we also wanted to live in a home that was bright and fresh and had a feeling of newness, but at the same time, stick to the character of the neighborhood and the historic homes that we love.
So one of the other things was that both Lauren and her husband David have two small children, and they wanted the house to really have a better flow. The existing family room area was down two steps, so we did a remodeling where we raised the level up to meet the kitchen floor, and all of that really worked well with her family.
Specific to this project was the complete interior and exterior remodeling of the 1980s addition, shows creativity, breathing new life into an old home, and showing respect for the historic architecture. That Lauren Grossman is the owner, Cone and Hacker are the architects, and Windsor Builders was the contractor. And the final project is 522 and 1/2 Forest Avenue.
The purpose of this design was the owners were looking for a way to keep their parents on site. And we were able to actually put a coach house next to their main house. And we had looked in the code, and there was nothing that said a coach house couldn't be one-story. And so that's what we did. We did a little copy of the big house and the parkings in the back of it. This project's impact for the neighborhood and the community and the site was interesting because the lot was so large that, in fact, it looked like there was a hole in the street. There was a hole in the urban fabric. And by putting this smaller house next to it, it fit that in really well, and it keeps the rhythm of the street. And it looks like it really belongs there, like it's always, should have been a part of that property. So we're really happy with the way that that came out.
The jury comment specific to this property is that it subtly fits into the historic district. The vocabulary of the coach house complements the historic house, and the two structures have a wonderful dialogue. Susan Havacamp and Conrad Epting are the owners. Nathan Kipnis is the architect, and Omega Structure, the contractor. Thank you. And I want to thank our jury members once more. Celeste Robbins, who is with us tonight, the 11 nomination participants, Mayor Hagerty, and I'd also like to thank the members of our Preservation Commission for their hard work and dedication in preserving the city of Evanston's architectural heritage. Thanks to all.
Next, Mr. Mayor, Jennifer Lasek, the cultural arts coordinator, is here to talk about an online public art map that we've recently completed. Jennifer, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Hagerty, members of the City Council, Clerk Reed, and City Manager Bobkowicz. I have been working for two years with an intern who is a GIS student at McAllister, and she has done some amazing work. You know, throughout the city of Evanston, we have so many really bright and energetic interns that do pretty incredible work. So for a long time, there's been a question about can we, how do we show off our public art, or how do people see it? So Asia started a project last year, and so this year, she's continuing. And I just thought it was appropriate for her to come and demonstrate what she's working on and what's available to people. And a little, like, bonus at the end, we're adding something new this year in the form of a self-guided bike tour. So Asia Sageman is a second-year intern here, and I believe you just finished your junior year at McAllister. Her mom, Monica Sageman, is here as well, and she is a board member of the Noised Tonnant Association and is an Evanston artist. So Asia's kind of putting together her GIS tech side and her artist side. So, Asia, come on.
Thank you. Good evening. As Jennifer said, my name is Asia Sageman, and I'm working for the Arts Council, creating this interactive map of public art in Evanston. And so I've been documenting city-owned, Northwestern-owned, and other pieces of public art, and have put this information onto an interactive map. An interactive map. The goals of this map are to give users easy virtual access to the public art of Evanston, to provide a way of finding interesting art in Evanston, to identify art in one's neighborhood, and to help plan art tours. The next step we're taking with the map is to add a bike route onto the interactive map, which will make it easier for users to plan biking or walking tours of the public art in Evanston. So now, I'll show you a demonstration of... Oops. Whoa, it's a little weird to do it from here. So this side, I've just added the sidebar. Soon, this will be an explanation of the map and its uses and goals. And so to use the map, you'll just click on the points, and it will show a photo of the piece of art, description, and if you click on the title, it'll take you to a website that's either about the art piece or about the artist. And we have city-owned, Northwestern, and other public art pieces in Evanston. Okay. We've got some nice Northwestern art, and some city of Evanston art as well. I'm very happy to have been able to work on this project and been able to share our progress with you tonight. Do you have any questions? Yes. So it's not finished yet, but I can send out a link to this for anyone to take a look at the art that we have on here already, and if you have any that you know of in Evanston that we don't have on here already, to let us know, and I can get that on there.
Is it available on mobile devices?
Yeah, I mean, it's on the Internet, so if you can look at it on... It's on an app. It's an Internet app, so you can open it on a phone.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great, thank you, Asia.
Thank you. And I just wanted to... The other thing I wanted to tell you is that we specifically designed the bike tour so that it'll include Divvy stops, which I think is very important in Evanston. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Jennifer.
And lastly, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'd like to ask Jill Vellum, our new Parking Division Manager, to come up. Jill? Jill joined us, what, about three weeks ago? Two weeks ago?
Yes.
A month ago? Something like that.
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago. Jill is an Evanston resident. She's lived in Evanston for nine years. She has two children, attend Walker Elementary School. So I started with the personal stuff, and then we'll talk about the professional stuff. Jill comes to us from the Village of Oak Park, who charge a competitive minimum wage, I understand. She spent five years in Oak Park as their Parking and Mobility Services Director and was our partner in launching Divvy. So as many of you know, the grant came both to Evanston and Oak Park, and so she was very much involved in that. Prior to her time in Oak Park, she spent two years in the Village of Antioch as a village administrator, and then prior to that, 11 years in Lincolnwood as their Assistant Village Administrator. So we're very excited to have Jill here. As you know, Mr. Voss is going to only have one job now. He'll continue to manage our fleet operations until he finally comes to his retirement sometime toward the end of this calendar year. So Jill, welcome. We're very happy to have you.
Thank you very much. I'm really excited to be home and look forward to working with everyone and the city of Evanston with your parking needs.
Great, thank you, Jill. And that concludes my announcements, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Wally. City Clerk, any communications?
No communications.
All right, so now is the time that we'll go into public comment. I don't... Do we have the total number? Is this the total number that we have here? Okay, so we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. We have eight people that are signed up for public comment. If there's anyone else out here who wanted to say something at the podium, please let us know, and we'll put you on. But otherwise, we've got eight people per our rules. That means that each person will have three minutes. We have a 45-minute total max, so it should take us about 25 minutes to get through public comment tonight. I do ask everyone to please be respectful of that three minutes. I will give you a 15-second warning when you're about to approach three minutes, and that is to be respectful of other people that are in this room, people that are watching on TV, the people up at the dais, and so we can get through this meeting tonight. All right, so the first speaker is Herb Harms.
My name is Herb Harms, and I am an Evanston resident. I want to make a suggestion to the Evanston City Council that before they make a final decision about the future of the Harley-Clark property at the lakefront, they consult with both the state and federal government offices to determine whether their Evanston plans comply with the existing laws concerning public access to major U.S. waterways. Of course, Lake Michigan is in that category. If a decision is made by the Evanston City Council that doesn't provide adequate and equitable access to the lakefront for all of its citizens, then in the future, we might face lengthy and costly court challenges. We surely wouldn't want that. The laws are there, so let's check them out. Let's check them out. Thank you.
Thank you, Herb. Okay, next speaker is Rob Coons, and then after Rob will be Matt Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Rob Coons. I live at 2617 Lincolnwood Drive, and I'm also employed at Northwestern University as the Senior Director of Broadcast Operations for the Athletic Department, oversee video production. And as part of that role was able to help craft earlier this year a written policy at Northwestern regarding the use of drones on our campus, which is why I'm here tonight to speak on ordinance 46017 regarding small unmanned aircraft. I sent all of you my thoughts in written form earlier this week. I know many of you read them. I appreciate your response, so I won't waste your time by repeating the same comments. What I wanted to address tonight, though, is more of a personal note. So one of the things that I love about the city of Evanston and living and working here is that Evanston's really a city that embraces innovation, both in technology and in the arts, which, for me, drones provide a combination of those two things. This ordinance, though, as it's written, I think, sends the opposite message to residents of the city. Instead of finding a way to promote safe and responsible operation of these aircraft in ways that can benefit and showcase our city, it says that we see an emerging technology and that we're afraid of it, and we're just going to restrict and shut that use down. So I would urge each of you to consider tonight, as you vote on that ordinance, whether that's the message that we want to send about this emerging technology and what it could potentially do for our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Matt Rogers, and then Malik Turley, and then Michelle Hayes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm coming tonight to speak about the project at Howard and Chicago Avenue. This project literally is out my back door. I live at 133 Clyde, so the metro tracks are the only thing that separate me from this property. I've lived in my house for 13 years, and for those 13 years, this has been a horrible, horrible corner. As I bring people into town, I kind of tell them to look the other way as we go through that intersection, because it is so bad. The other thing that I think this property will do to help is we have seen our property values in my corner of town go down drastically, and they have not rebounded in the way that many of the other neighborhoods in Evanston have. And how does that affect the city of Evanston? When I moved in, my property taxes were $4,000. They're currently $1,400. And so because that neighborhood is seeking development, is needing to be improved, I'd much rather pay more in my property taxes and have a thriving neighborhood there on that particular corner, a property that actually does something. I also think it's very important that the affordable housing aspect of it be taken into consideration. So I would ask you to think favorably upon that particular project and give it your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Malik Turley, Michelle Hayes, and then Drina Nicola.
So my name is Malik Turley, and I also live in the area around the proposed building at Howard and Clark. I'm on Dobson, just west of Custer, and I have been there for 17 years and have seen a lot of big and good changes come to our neighborhood, and I feel like this building could add to that. The affordable housing piece of it is also really important. I know that we have a lot of new rentals in Evanston. That's not the same as having a lot of new affordable rentals in Evanston. So if we can make that happen and use the fund that we have set aside for affordable housing that's put into, or the money's put into it, by buildings that don't want to put the affordable housing in their properties, I think that is a pretty important part to keep in mind. So please put it on our corner, and we'll visit the Garden Center and add it to the mix of awesome in our neighborhood. Thanks.
Thank you, Malik. Michelle Hayes, then Drina Nicola, and then Paul Klitsky.
Hi, I'm Michelle Hayes, and I actually... All of the things that are true from Malik about where we live are true for me. We're next-door neighbors, and we've lived there the same length of time. I also wanted to talk about the project for Howard Street and Chicago Avenue. I agree, that corner really needs some attention. We have... There is occasionally some spillover from the area behind, in Chicago, that's behind the train tracks there, that can create problems in the neighborhood, and there just aren't eyes on that part of the street. So having people living there and shopping there will make everything better. I also wanted to talk a little bit generally about affordable housing. As some of you may know, I'm working a lot with individuals who are struggling with homelessness right now in Evanston, and I feel like we are approaching the problem backwards, that we're having development that brings in, you know, a few units, rather than looking at the need and the level of need across the community and saying, "We need this need to be reduced by X amount in order for people to develop here." So I would urge council to think about that and maybe get some better information on what homelessness actually looks like in Evanston. I know we have McKinney-Vento numbers at the schools, and I believe Connections has McKinney-Vento for themselves, and I think we need to start with those numbers when we talk about affordable housing. So that's all for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Drina Nicola, then Paul Klitsky, and then Priscilla Giles.
I live in the 9th Ward at 2008 Keeney Street, and I'm a resident here since 1990. I've been active in the task force for Age-Friendly Evanston's Housing Committee, and a few of you have seen me here before, talking about some of our statistics related to affordable housing and seniors. So I'm looking at this project, and I'm here not representing the task force, per se, but having dug into the numbers that we're looking at. So I always start with a number of, by 2030, 1/3 of our population will be 65-plus. And so as we're looking at this issue, and I concur with our previous commenter, we're looking at a homelessness situation for seniors, and I think a lot of times, we don't think of it that way. I would support this entire building being affordable housing for seniors. So whether the project moves forward as proposed, or gets expanded, or reconsidered, or maybe even another development type of package... I know we talked about an action plan last summer, which ties in with the task forces' initiatives. I'm going to go into a little bit more about that. A couple of other issues that we have in addition to this is our housing stock is older than the national housing stock, and it's not the kind of housing stock we have for seniors. So a building with an elevator, again, goes a long way to provide us newer stock and stock that works for seniors. So those are my comments for this evening, and I'll be watching this as it develops. Thanks.
Thank you, Drina. Paul Klitsky, Priscilla Giles, and then Joshua Lustig.
Mayor Hagerty, city council, thank you guys, first of all, for your time this evening. I want to just say I appreciate that. Just, I'll make it short and sweet. I'm with Nature's Perspective Landscaping, and just here to voice my opposition for the proposed regulation of small unmanned aircrafts in the city of Evanston. We currently use a drone for aerial photography, videography of our clients' properties. It's a really great way of being able to get some amazing shots and some very great content that works really well for our marketing campaigns. And I feel that if the ordinance was to go through, it would make that process a lot harder and a lot more challenging, thus challenging our business. So, thank you.
Great, thank you, Paul. Priscilla Giles.
My name is Priscilla Giles. At the last council meeting where the equity surveys were discussed, it was reported that there was very low response, especially in the Fifth Ward. One of the residents who answered for the second time at Fleetwood Jordan to that survey, but there were no surveys left there afterwards, nor were there any at Family Focus, nor barber shops, beauty shops, churches, places where people congregate. People best need to, people best respond to, I would say, paper better than machines. I'd also like to discuss the, or speak to, Evanston hate has no home here, and we welcome everybody. But council members squabble about including housing affordable to citizens, many of whom have lived and worked for generations in Evanston, and now are being pushed out by high rent and taxes for which they can't benefit. Evanston needs new and existing housing, which always includes housing for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Priscilla. And the last speaker we have tonight is Joshua Lustig.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Josh Lustig. I've lived in Evanston the last 21 years. I was graduating of EHS in 2014. I'm here to talk about some open data and open source initiatives. So many other cities, including Chicago is a big one, have open data portals and open source initiatives. So open data, you know, you guys have, there is a portal right now, but it is not up to, I think, a lot of standards that a lot of other cities are having. You know, an open data, an open source, an open source code, I mean, code that's developed in the city that could be put online, it's secure, but other people could develop on top of it. This enables people around the community to add new ideas and innovations, especially with Northwestern around the corner. You know, their students probably want to help the Evanston community and have an open data and open source code. We could really help with that. For example, you know, a lot of people here talked about, you know, housing inequality and different, you know, getting priced out. An example, you know, I, for example, sorry, I'm talking really fast, trying to get in a lot, for example, created a map of the 2017 presidential turnout using the data on this open source portal that you guys have. However, I found it very hard to continue. There was not many other sources that I could add on to. But, and as I was pointing out, you know, if you were to open this up to other people to develop, a lot of new innovations could be done to help you guys do a better job, to help the community actually see more results if you open it up to everyone to innovate, rather than just the people in the city to innovate. So that is what I wanted to talk about. Thanks.
Joshua, thank you, thank you very much.
And sir, if you could give the nice lady you're sitting next to your name and contact information, we'd love to talk some more.
Okay, thank you.
All right, terrific. Well, that concludes, that concludes public comment. And we are now going to move on to special orders of business this evening. We have two special orders of business. The first one will be the discussion of Harley-Clark Mansion, RFP, and then the second one will be the 2017 budget expense and revenue recommendations from the city manager. So in terms of special, SP1 request for proposal to lease the Harley-Clark Mansion, city manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, in your packet this evening, you have the latest iteration of the draft RFP. This is based on the discussion that the council had at its last meeting. That document begins on page, page 11. We believe we've incorporated the comments that you have. We're asking this evening if this is the case, to please confirm that, and if so, we will move forward with the dates as established. We're happy to answer any questions.
Move approval?
Second.
My only, my only comment is I continue to believe that we really, really want, you know, the marketplace to provide ideas to us. It ought to be more than two months. I just feel that a two-month, you know, period for this RFP is too little. But I voiced that at the last meeting, and I continue to feel that way. I think six months would be appropriate for the marketplace to really come to us with ideas.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had two quick questions, and I must have been asleep last time we were discussing it. The one was just a clarification on the MWEBE portion of the RFP. Are we looking at, I'm assuming the LEP is not something we're taking advantage of, but is it the 25% goal in terms of the vendors? I just wanted some clarification from it, from our staff.
Yes, Alderman Braithwaite, members of the council, on page 20 of the RFP, I think we made some changes to the language. I think the folks wanted it to be more of a statement, and then the policy itself is now attached as an appendix.
Okay, got that. And then my second follow-up, and I know it's not going to be popular, but along with what the mayor shared with the marketplace, I do believe in talking to some of the residents that we shouldn't restrict the RFP in terms of, and I'm not on the, what page is this thing on, just so I can, on the packet, we're, I'm looking specifically at the restaurant provision. So we wanted some light, something, something.
Light fare.
Yeah, light fare, cafe. I'm just, other thought and opinion that we shouldn't restrict that in sending out the RFP, but I don't think there's an appetite to change it.
No.
See?
You're smart.
I just thought I'd share.
Alderman Fleming?
So I would, if it goes that way, I would support keeping this RFP open a little longer. I think my hesitation to do that was that it's just, it's been six years already, and so I am a little hesitant to push it out a little further, but I do want to make sure that when we go out with this RFP, our FP, we get good proposals back so that we can move forward with leasing and getting this building to whatever it's going to be in its long life. So if others, you know, follow that lead and they think pushing it out, I don't know, whatever date we're looking at, I would support that, but I want that to be final so that we can actually get the ball rolling and get this place occupied.
Boy, I missed which light went on first. We'll go with Alderman Wilson, and then Alderman Fisk.
Fisk was first.
Oh, Fisk, okay, we'll go with Fisk, and then Alderman Wilson.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with you on this and said so at the last meeting. Since we're looking for not-for-profit organizations to respond, normally, not-for-profits meet, have board meetings once a month, and this really does not give them time to have a meeting and really carefully consider as a group their response. So again, I'd follow your lead on what you think an appropriate time is, but at least adding one more month, I think would be helpful.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson?
Okay, so personally, I don't have a strong opinion. It started out last, last meeting with the, with the longer timeframe, and we shortened that up partly in consideration of some of the, some of the concerns and comments as far as fundraising, things of that nature with interested parties. So I'll just kind of defer for the moment. I don't know if anybody wants to make a motion to change it. I don't want to make a motion to change it.
Okay.
Alderman Fisk?
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion to, to push the date out for receipt of responses to the RFP by one month.
Second.
Okay, if there's no further conversation, can we have a roll call vote on SP1?
On the, yeah.
Excuse me, all right, let me go. I got two Alderman that quickly came in. Alderman Ru Simmons?
Just to speak to Alderman Braithwaite's suggestion or mention of more than light fare, did we discuss what the objections are to having a full-service restaurant there? Was that, is that something that we can talk about more?
Alderman Fisk?
I would say absolutely not. I will not vote for any use that, that includes a full-service restaurant on the lake. It sets a precedent for the rest of the lakefront. I don't think we want to go there, certainly not consistent with the lakefront master plan. And as Alderman Ravel said at our last meeting, one of the things she wanted to be included was that the use, whatever it was, be consistent with the lakefront master plan. A light fare, a light fare cafe is, but a full-service restaurant would not be. And I think the associated problems with a full-service restaurant on the lakefront, especially if we're going to open that up to the entire lakefront. If, if you have not ever looked at how restaurants really operate, like walking down alleys and seeing the back, the backdoor operations of restaurants, there's trucks and trash and noise and all parking, all sorts of things related to that, that I don't think are consistent with the passive use that we have worked very hard to define our lakefront.
Okay, Alderman, Alderman Wynn?
Well, I would echo what Alderman Fisk said. During the drafting of the lakefront master plan, it was very much the consensus, and a strong consensus from the public, that there not be a full-service restaurant along the lakefront for all of the reasons that Alderman Fisk has described, that when, you know, a full-service restaurant has, and because there are many of them in the Third Ward, endless deliveries, enormous amounts of garbage, grease barrels that have to be emptied, and all of those things would have to go somewhere around the Harley-Clark Mansion. And I think that's, as much as we all might like to have a fine restaurant on the lakefront, I think everyone needs to recognize that it comes with the downside. And that a light fare cafe was contemplated during the lakefront master plan process, and specifically not a full-service restaurant. For exactly those reasons.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And maybe I should clarify my position. And first, the statement is, I want to choose between irony and hypocrisy in that when we were discussing this issue earlier, every single time a speaker or a resident had an opportunity to talk about minority or person of color having access to the beach, it was, it was name-dropped, every single time. And so as I was on the lakefront this past weekend at the Ethnic Arts Festival, or whatever the name is, I can't tell you how many people that I ran into, and the comments are, "I wish we had more choices of eating when they're down there," right? Now, what was just described to left and right of me sounded like a grease pit, and I just want to be clear, that's not what I'm suggesting. And I just said we shouldn't limit the RFP to light cafe, and we should just be open to whatever the market, whatever we get in response to. And then we evaluate it based on when we come in. But to eliminate it and characterize it, it makes me cringe a little bit. So I just want to be clear that whether it's full service, I don't know what people want to do. I just want to be able to take those recommendations and be able to look at them in their entirety is the position that I'm advocating for.
Alderman Wilson, and then Alderman Wynn?
Okay, Alderman Braithwaite, I think maybe you misheard what Alderman Fisk and Wynn said. Nobody said anything about the restaurant being a grease pit. Okay. It didn't sound like that at all. It absolutely didn't sound like that. But a restaurant requires certain services, like deliveries and dumpsters, and it just has a different level of service. So nobody called what you're suggesting a grease pit?
Okay.
All right. But we just went through a very extensive process with a committee that Alderman Ravel spent an extraordinary amount of time working on. We gave the responsibility to that committee. We said, "Okay, committee, you're in charge of coming back and telling us what your recommendation is." And they had the expectation, and last time we were here, we were endeavoring to do what they were recommending. So that's what we're doing. We're doing an RFP consistent with what the recommendation is. So I don't like every aspect of the, of the recommendation. It's not totally perfect in my mind, but I'm going to respect the extraordinarily long process that's gotten us to this point, and I'm not going to throw out all the work that dozens of people have spent, you know, a year working on. So I just, I want to get this going and, and move it along.
Great. Alderman Wynn, and Alderman Braithwaite?
I won't belabor this. Peter, I formally invite you to an alley tour on Chicago Avenue that includes Union, Campaniola, Oceanique, Lucky Platter, Blind Faith. I tell you now, none of those are grease pits. All of them have grease barrels behind them. So you're, I invite you to come with me, and I'll show you what the back of a full-service, really well-respected, delicious restaurant that Evanston looks like. Also, I have to agree with Alderman Wilson. This is an 11th-hour change in this process, and Alderman Ravel, who is not here tonight, can't talk about the process that she went, that she worked on, and this was a critical part of it. I won't support an RFP that calls for a full-service restaurant. We had a year-long process for a lakefront master plan, and it was very clear during that entire process that people did not want to have a full-service restaurant or more commercial operations along the lakefront. If people want to have more choices along the lakefront to eat, you can bring a picnic, just like Ravinia. Then you get to bring whatever you want. And then the next day, that space gets to be used by somebody else to do some other activity. Have a volleyball game, have a quiet read of a book, have a large family reunion. That's what the passiveness, passive park means. So, Peter, I'm waiting for your answer.
You're up next, Peter.
I'll take that challenge. And we just had, I'd love to. Again, I'm not making a decision to say yes or no. I just think in terms of the process and what we entertain, it should be open, is my position. And it isn't my position based on my personal feelings, but based on having that conversation with people from my ward. If you want to know what people of color think as I raise that issue, they think we should have more options. So that's what I'm expressing right now.
Okay, thank you. All right, if there's no, if there's no further conversation, we have a motion to accept this RFP with a 30-day extension to the RFP date to make it for a three-month period of time. And we can do a voice vote on this. All in favor?
No.
No.
Okay, okay.
That's on the extension.
That's on the extension alone. So the vote, so the vote is to have the city manager go ahead and process this RFP with one change, which is extending the RFP due date for an extra 30 days.
Want you to do the extension?
All right, so is everybody, and so, so the amendment is to extend the RFP date for 30 additional days for a total of 90 days. All in favor?
No.
All right, okay, all opposed?
No.
All right, let's do a roll vote on this. City Clerk, that's okay?
Change of law.
Let's, let's just do a roll, let's just do a roll on that.
Alderman Sufferton?
Aye.
Alderman Ravel's absent. Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
No.
Alderman Wilson?
No.
Alderman Ru Simmons?
No.
All right. The noes have it five to three. The RFP stays as is.
The motion is not to pass. We voted on the amendment, I thought, just as a point of information.
No.
Yeah. So now we vote on the motion.
The motion, yeah.
All right. So do I have a motion to approve?
We get that already.
Oh, we have, all right. Okay. All in favor of the motion to approve the RFP as is?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. RFP passes. And just so for everybody that's clear, so it has a 60-day RFP period as it originally had. Okay. Second order of business is the 2017 budget expense and revenue recommendations. City Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Let me make a few introductory comments, and then I'll ask Mr. Lyons to walk through the memorandum. As we reported to you at your last meeting, we anticipate the fiscal year 2017 ending in a deficit. We detailed to you at your last meeting the reasons we believe that will occur. Those reasons are once again discussed in this memorandum. What we've come to you tonight with is a solution to balance what we believe will be a $3,324,000 deficit in the current year budget. The city council's Administration Public Works Committee early this evening failed to entertain a portion of this package, and that was a $205,000 adjustment just for this year for changes to parking. So we do not have this evening a replacement for that $205,000. And would ask that if the council is agreeable with the balance of this package, that we would come back to you at a future meeting. As we looked to bring to you a solution for your consideration, it was very clear to me and very clear to the staff that certainly taxes and fees were not on the table. And I think we have heard an additional message from you this evening, that taxes and fees and adjustments to penalties are not on the table. And those, quite honestly, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, are the lion's share of our revenues. And so if we are going to look to make adjustments to the budget to balance for the current year and also look toward next year with similar parameters, it's going to be very difficult. We believe we have some opportunities in the current year budget to have additional savings, and those are outlined to you. We believe we have some opportunities in the current year budget to make some transfers that will make sense for us moving forward for 2017. Those options will not be available in 2018, and we will have to do, make additional changes. I want to recognize the men and women of the ASME Local who are here this evening. Thank you for coming out this evening. Thank you for your interest in these important issues. Given the parameters that I believe the council is directing me to consider, really the only other way we're able to make adjustments to the budget are to look at additional expense reductions. I have purposely not come to you this evening with any layoffs. There is a proposed adjustment in the tentative bargaining agreements that we have with our bargaining units. We had tentative agreements, we had tentative agreements with ASME Fire to have an adjustment beginning on January 1. We are proposing that we go back to the bargaining table, respecting our responsibilities as an employer, our responsibilities to collective bargaining, to go back to the table with a proposal that would reduce that, to start any adjustments to July 1 versus January 1. I guess my message to the council, my message to my fellow employees, is that additional reductions are going to be necessary, that unless we have the ability to raise revenue, and I believe the city council's direction is very clear, that that is not something you're interested in entertaining at this point, that we're going to need to look at our expenses. Also included in this package at the very end are some additional policy changes, which I think will be helpful to us as we deal with this. This is not a six-month issue. This is not a one-year issue. This is a multi-year issue. And I think in order for the city of Evanston to move forward over the next few years, we need to look more broadly. We cannot solve these issues in one year. The impacts of reduced building in the city are real. Northwestern University has been extraordinary in their investment on their campus, but those large investments are coming to an end, and we need to be mindful of that. We need to be mindful of the ongoing uncertainty in Springfield. We need to be mindful of other adjustments to the retail economy, not only here in Evanston, but throughout the area. We need to be mindful that the university will now, 12 months from now, require sophomores to live on campus, which will have, I think, a significant impact on the rental properties in the eastern edge of the Fifth Ward, and we will need to deal with the consequences of that. We will also need to deal with the consequences of the CTA and their continuing work on the red and purple line, and we are going to need to take leadership in investing in the purple line. With all that said, I believe that it will be important for the council, as you receive the 2018 budget, to look beyond 2018, but to look at 2019. And I'm proposing that we would present to you a second-year plan. It probably would not be a two-year budget that would traditionally be seen in municipalities, but a second-year plan so that we can explain and the council can agree to, hopefully, a plan that takes us through the next two fiscal years. In addition, we're going to be looking at some of the operations of our existing departments. We'll be looking at the balance of this year at the city manager's office, the Administrative Services Department, and the Law Department, and look for savings there. I'm also proposing that we would look at the organizational structure of the Police Department during 2018 for 2019 budget opportunities. I'm also proposing that for the current year, we require my approval for all travel and training, for all furniture fixture and equipment, that we have tighter scrutiny on overtime. Again, if we are not able to raise additional revenue, we need to look at expenses. And looking at expenses is going to be difficult, is going to require us to do less things, and yes, it will likely require layoffs of our employees. None of this I take lightly. I know none of you take this lightly, but these discussions need to begin now in order for us to be fair to our employees, who work very, very hard every single day to ensure the quality of life in this community. I want to make sure we're fair to our employees, but we also need to be real with our employees. So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that is not a very uplifting start to this discussion, but I think it's a necessary one for us to consider our options moving forward. And again, as I've mentioned, since the Administration Public Works Committee has declined to consider the changes to the parking tickets, the boot regulations, and the street sweeping, we believe that then now has us $200,000 in arrears. We will look at what our options are. They may include adjustments to staff. You know, I would hope that we would not have to do that, but certainly I think we are going to look over the next several weeks at furloughs. We're going to look over the next several weeks at other adjustments on the staffing side, because I'm not sure that we can make up that $200,000 without doing that. We will certainly attempt to. We will certainly give it every diligent try, but would ask, Mr. Mayor, that we be allowed to come back with that $200,000 piece rather than make offers to you this evening on the fly. I don't think that's very responsible. I think I'd like some additional time to look at that. But we feel confident that the rest of the package here makes a lot of sense, and we'd like to have an opportunity to present that.
Sure. Thank you, City Manager. Alderman Wilson, and then we'll go Alderman Fisk, and then Alderman, excuse me, Alderman Rainey, and then Alderman Fisk.
Thank you. And I was not on the committee earlier, I guess, that took off the increase in the fees and the fines. I'm going to express that I'm hopeful that the group collectively could maybe kind of reconsider that concept, contrary to what some people have suggested. I don't see raising a parking ticket fine to be the most aggressive type of an approach. You know, I would like to focus on things that are at least somewhat within people's control. So you can hopefully remember to put the meter money in, or you can choose to park in the garage and pay at the end. So these are things that individuals have control over. Fees or costs that are tied to things that people have no control over are more regressive in nature, and people don't have options. So I would really like to see us steer away from those types of things. Also, reducing services that people are relying on, again, is not... Those things, to me, are actually more regressive in nature. So hopefully, we can kind of regroup on these, on some of these points and think of ways to, you know, maintain the service levels, keep our employees. It's not like we are overstaffed, that I'm aware of. I've been through enough budget cycles. We've struggled through enough, you know, pension funding efforts to feel confident that there's not, you know, a ton of low-hanging fruit like social media would have you believe. So, you know, hopefully, we can kind of reconsider our approach on some of that. But thank you, City Manager, for the report and for being forward-thinking on it.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson. Alderman Rainey?
Yes. Well, I was on the committee, and I will not reconsider my vote. And the reason I'm not going to reconsider my vote has nothing to do with the tax, with the fines being regressive, because I agree with you, they are not regressive. Other kinds of fines and fees are regressive, but this is not regressive, because, as you say, you can make certain that you move your car, and you put money in your meter, and you have a choice of whether or not to get a ticket. However, however, when I am told that those same fines and ticket fines have built up an unpaid, uncollected total of $2 to $5 million sitting someplace in people's pockets that we have not collected, I don't see any point in raising it. You can raise it $100. We're not collecting the fines and fees that we're charging. So I'm not going to add to that burden. I read the Transportation and Parking Committee minutes, and that's what they're telling us. There are millions and millions of dollars of uncollected fines, which brings me to wonder, what other uncollected fines and fees do we have? And so I would like to know that. What other fines and fees do we have that aren't from street sweeping, that aren't from overstayed parking meters? What other ones do we have? And so I'd like to know. What are we doing about collecting money? I was told that one of the reasons we're not collecting this money is because we don't report unpaid parking tickets that have accumulated to credit bureaus, things like that. Let's get aggressive. Let's collect this money. It's real money. We're talking $5 million.
Thank you.
$5 million will solve some of our problems.
Thank you, Alderman.
You get laid off if you collect $5 million.
Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, Alderman Rainey, I hope that you will reconsider your position, although I agree with you that we should definitely ask for an explanation for staff about what our strategy is going to be to get the money that we're owed. But I don't think that, even if we do have that strategy, I don't think it's going to come in time to address the issues that are before us right now. I agree with Alderman Wilson. I mean, there are three of us up here who are not on ANPW. Alderman Revelle, I believe, is on ANPW. She wasn't there tonight, so there's...
Yes, eh?
Oh, she isn't? Okay. Well, then, there are four of us up here who are not on ANPW. But I do think that this is a fair and equitable way for us to raise some revenue that is not regressive, is not a tax. So I would just, I would like to find a way to reconsider that. I'd also like, I would just like to hear a little bit more about the discussion at ANPW. Was it a unanimous vote, or it was unanimous vote at ANPW?
Yep.
Okay. Well, Mr. City Manager, I guess I'd like to find a way if there is an opportunity for us to bring this back in some form or another, if that's a possibility. I'd also like an explanation of how we're going to go out and find the money that we're still owed.
Great. Alderman Braithwaite?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was hoping Alderman Rainey would have shared her other thought, and I would tell you that the only way that that's going to change for the other three Aldermen that brings it up is you would need someone on AP&amp;W, correct me if I'm wrong, from our corporate council, to bring it back up. We're all unanimous in our thought. But what Alderman Rainey didn't continue to share is, I think you're correct. I think the city of Chicago had an amnesty program of some sort where we could be very creative and aggressive, I'll use your word, about going after that $2 million. I'm not sure if I'm supportive of the credit reporting, but I think to waive late fees, whatever incentives that we can come up with to get our residents to pay the parking ticket seems like a no-brainer of an idea. And I don't know who that would fall on, whether that's our new parking revenue person or Mr. Voss, but I think that's an excellent idea, Alderman Rainey, and something that I would like to see us follow up on.
Alderman Winn?
Well, I think at some point in the past, we did do an amnesty on our parking tickets. So I'd like to hear from staff about that, about what the results were of that. I am on the Transportation and Parking Committee, and we did have a detailed discussion about the changing the boot regulations on this. And there were, there were a number of, several of us on the committee who initially felt that lowering the boot from five tickets to three tickets would be onerous. But actually, then, staff explained to us that they're frequently, by the time someone gets five tickets, the amount that someone owes is an overwhelming amount for a number of people, and that actually reducing it to three tickets stops that number from getting so high that then eventually someone is in a position of not being able to drive their car, not being able to get to work. And that dropping it to three is not as onerous as letting it go up to five. So that was, we had quite a long discussion about that and ultimately felt that it was a better idea to drop it to three. I also agree with Alderman Wilson that these are all things that people do have some control over, and that, you know, it's possible to live in Evanston and not ever get a parking ticket if you're conscientious about everything. So I do hope that we can keep thinking about some of these issues, because I do think that these are better than adding fines or fees that someone cannot control.
Thank you, Alderman Winn.
I wanted to add one more point, because I would like to hear from, I'm sorry, from Mr. Voss about the amount that we are alleged to owe. I was at, I've been at every Transportation and Parking Committee meeting. I have not been able to look back, Alderman Rainey, just now at the last committee's meetings, but I do think that perhaps what there might have been referenced was that we have many out-of-town visitors who end up getting a ticket, and we don't have reciprocity with their state. And, you know, we have a lot of Northwestern students here who drive away after four years, and they owe us a lot of money, and there isn't a way for us to collect.
Mr. Mayor, if you'd like, Ms. Starley can address the question.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. Clerk Reed, City Manager Babakwess, and members of the city council, I'm Erica Starley, Deputy City Manager. I have a couple of quick answers to some issues that have been raised tonight. Overall, our collection rate on all of our parking tickets is around 86%. That's very in line with the industry average. We do issue a lot of parking citations, so the fact that there's $2 to $5 million in outstanding is relative to the amount that we are collecting. As far as the overall amount owed, on the second page of the memo regarding the boot fee regulations, there's an updated table of outstanding citations, and these are all citations, not just the expired meter or the street sweeping. So, you know, people with three or more outstanding citations, $2 million. Four or more, 1.5. Five or more, 1.1. Total outstanding from January 1, 2010 to present, 4.8 million. Most people would say you're not going to get anything more than five years back. So if you take a few...
Erica, I'm sorry, which page are you on, please?
Item A13.
Do you have the page number of the packet?
I do not, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
There's a table below that. It also shows a breakdown of how much is owed by Evanston residents and how much is owed by those outside of Evanston. Fairly helpful in understanding where...
Could you just tell us what those numbers are? I don't have the page.
It's right here.
And members of the council, if you recall, and I think Alderman Winn alluded to this, we've had this discussion in the time I've been here, and I think what has been the biggest problem is our inability to add these past-due bills to people's credit reports, and that we started doing that, and if I recall, many members of the city council received many negative comments from residents who felt that that was inappropriate. And so that lasted Mr. Lyons less than six months, less than three months.
About the time a large transfer stamp was denied due to parking tickets, that was the straw. Six months.
So I think if the council's willing to reconsider that, I don't, certainly, part of it is diligence on our part, but part of it is that as well. And so that tool, my guess is, would probably take care of two-thirds of what we are seeing there. And so that's a policy direction from the city council, but I think... And so that's a policy direction from the City Council, but I think I just wanted to make that clear, that we truly believe that the inability to do that, people understand that we have then limited ways to go after them, and they choose to spend their money in different ways.
Great. Thank you. Next is Alderman Fleming.
So I just want to clarify, I guess, my position on the parking tickets, because I understand there's been some confusion as to what I think. So I also am in transportation, and I did have the lengthy conversation about boots, and went back and forth about that. My concern with the parking ticket is that, particularly when it comes to the boot, not necessarily the meter, is that myself, like others, has a lot of apartment buildings where people are already trying to find parking. And then you add in street sweeping, or I talked to a lady the other day who gets home late, and there's no parking, and she's single, and she, you know, was concerned about her safety, and she tends to park, farewell, she tends to park kind of with her car just into a little bit of a no parking zone, just so she can feel safe walking home, which I understand is against our regulations, but, you know, I do want her to feel safe. So anyhow, so I hear from a lot of people about parking in the neighborhood, and so when I think about the ability to find parking when you live in a congested block, and then you maybe forget to move it for street sweeping, or then, you know, you park illegally for whatever reason, that these things add up. And I also know that we are in a state, unfortunately, with a horrible budget. We just had a huge increase to our property tax bill. Mine was $4,000 with the referendum and the county and all. And so every little penny, from what I'm hearing from people, really counts. And I know that none of my colleagues neglect that, but that is why I, after some thought, could not support the parking increases. Now, what I will say is that I also have very strong feelings about, as a council member, kind of nickel and diming, for lack of a better word, my constituents, when it appears that the biggest issue in our budget was us kind of overestimating what we thought we'd bring in from permit fees. So I know we can't go back and change that, and circumstances were different, and I wasn't here to make that vote, but I think we have to look, I would hope that we can look a little more internally about how to rectify that. I would say, I think if we are creative, that does not involve layoffs. I look at the bills list, and we pay for a lot of memberships to organizations for our staff. I don't know what that comes to yearly, and I don't know if those are necessarily required for them to complete their job, but maybe that's something that we, you know, look at for future ways to cut back. I know that there's employee recognition, and I definitely want our employees to feel appreciated, but I hope that they would understand that we don't want those employee recognition events to be on the backs of our taxpayers who are doing their best to stay in our town. We know that we have an affordable housing shortage. So those are all things that I take in consideration about whenever we are going to make increases. I know it's a sacrifice, but I think that if we are creative, we can look at doing that. When we talk about furlough days, I hope that we would think about equity in those, and that we're not asking people who make a lot less than others to take the same amount of furlough days, because we understand that's going to hurt their pockets more than someone who makes more money. So I don't have a solution. I'm happy to work on one, but that was my feeling in terms of just increasing the, and not that I think $20 is a lot, but just to increase that. I know that we talk about our downtown and maybe losing some shoppers who can go to Old Orchard and park for free and shop at a plethora of places. So I don't want us to make a decision, not really thinking through the effects it's going to have, maybe it's even a trickle down from losing some spending and such in our downtown area. So that's my thought, and that is my commitment to the people I serve, because that is what I hear from them. But I don't want that to mean that we definitely have to go to layoffs. I think there are some creative ways, and particularly with our union workers, I hope that they would understand that that was not the reason, I don't think, for any of our votes, for you to lose your job. But we do have to be creative, and we do have to think about how we are going to best keep our citizen base in our town, because we don't want them to start moving because we're nickel and diming them, for lack of a better term.
Thank you, Alderman Fleming. Alderman Rainey?
Well, I'm still hell-bent on raising some of this revenue that we're owed, and I, my proposal was that I would support reducing, and I agree with the concept of reducing the boot to three tickets, but to have an amnesty program for everyone who has three or more parking tickets, outstanding tickets, we do, an amnesty program, you pay the full ticket, you pay 10% of your late fees, and you're notified that as of a certain date, I think the amnesty should be 30 days or 45 days, whatever we agree on, and at the end of that period, boom, you have three outstanding tickets, you're going to get the boot, period. So people are warned that three tickets, you get the boot. And I, you know, anybody who doesn't comply has had fair warning that they get a real break on the tickets that they owe, and we just go after them. And I'm sure North Shore Toing would be glad to help out with doing the boot. And I think it's a great deal, because those outstanding late fees add up. And, you know, I mean, it's two to five million dollars. I don't care if it's two million dollars. And I heard, I talked to Erica Starley, and the way we tried to collect, we got very little money. I think there's got to be a way to collect this money. I can't, I don't see how any of us can talk about raising the ticket fee when we know we're not collecting this, even though we have an 85% collection rate. We have millions of dollars outstanding.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Alderman, Ruth Simmons, did you want to? Oh, okay.
Thank you. My comments, as it relates to parking, really echo Alderman Fleming, and I want to support the amnesty suggestion from Alderman Rainey. And this, in terms of the budget, just our fees in general, even our habitual offenders of property standard violations, and, you know, the liens that we're putting on those properties, are some other, are there other ways that we could look at collecting fines or enforcing them more effectively, so that we can collect fees from that? Just in the few properties that I've looked up, in our ward, we have property owners that have, you know, into the tens of thousands of dollars in liens, fees for violations of property standards, like, how are we looking to collect that as well?
Great. Alderman Saffron?
Yeah, I just want to bring this up, it's kind of a change, but Alderman Win mentioned out-of-state visitors not paying parking tickets. How are we on how we collect our hotel tax? Can we expand it to bed and breakfasts, Airbnb rentals? Is that something that we could do? Car rentals that are initiated in Evanston? If people aren't going to pay their parking tickets because we have no ability to enforce that, can we expand our tax collection when it comes to visitors in terms of hotels, bed and breakfasts, Airbnb rentals?
Alderman Saffron, members of the council, we, if the council so directs, we could have ordinances drafted to extend the existing hotel tax to Airbnb and to bed and breakfast, if you like. We already tax rental cars, so that is already in place. We could adjust that number. I think last I looked, it was the same as Chicago, so one of the few suburbs, I think, that actually taxes rental cars. So that's all very possible. If the council wants to look at the percentage of the hotel tax, you can do that. You know, I think we try to be competitive with Chicago, and I think our hotels are mostly full at this point, so I guess would hesitate to endorse changing the rate, but if the council so directs, we can draft ordinances for that. And as we are looking at 2018, Chicago, for example, has a fee for shared ride services for people who use Uber and Lyft. We already are looking at the particulars of that as a potential proposal for the 2018 budget. So Alderman, if you wish to make a motion, or if...
Yeah, I would love to look at that. I don't want to rehash all the parking issues that have been brought up, but I think when you have revenue and enforcement so closely tied together, it undermines the credibility of the enforcement, and I'd like to look at some other options before we... I also agree that our parking tickets are incredibly low and should have been probably escalating slightly on a yearly basis, but I think for us to say we have this hole, and now the way that we're going to solve it is by increasing parking fees immediately, I think is, it undermines the credibility of enforcement.
Thank you, Alderman Saffron. Alderman Braithwaite?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to support Alderman Rainey's original request for the amnesty program. I guess if I could make a suggestion based on the comments that I've heard, I would, based on the $1.1 million, I would create an amnesty program for the Evanston residents and make that a priority. And I think for the City of Chicago, those other Illinois suburbs in the out-of-state, which roughly add up to probably somewhere close to 800,000 to 900,000, that we would direct our city staff to be aggressive about going after those dollars. I think Alderman Win made a good point, that we have people that are leaving the City of Evanston and maybe even the state without paying, so let's be aggressive about going after those. The other thing that I brought up at our last council meeting, I think we're really not taking advantage of and missing the point, is with the permit fees. And I can't, I can only speak from the conversation I've heard from residents and other business owners, that it's taking way too long to process our permit fees. And I, at this point, it's anecdotal, but I think moving forward, I would ask Wally, our city manager, and whoever's over our zone, to really pay attention to those timelines. I will use Valley Foods as a perfect example. They just wanted to open their seating area to allow for customers to be able to sit and eat. Simple, tear down a wall, open it up, seating area, and they had to wait at least four weeks for a permit. And I had to call and ask that it be made a priority for them to open up an area that they've already constructed in order to have seating. And that's just one example. I had another situation with a contractor who wanted to do a fence, and I actually had to come in and turn in a permit because they felt that it was too difficult to go through the permitting process. Now, I think it's important for me to share that, you know, going online and doing it for the first time, it wasn't that difficult, but it's that outward perception for some of our residents that the permitting fee is difficult, that I think causes, again, anecdotal residents to avoid the permitting, and I think that it's really something that we need to pay attention to. I feel like we're leaving money on the table by not streamlining that process. And I know when I brought it up last week, it was a question of finding appropriate staffing, and I think that that should be a priority, especially given the fact that we budgeted for it. There seems to be a backlog and no real solution to remedy that.
Thank you, Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Fisk?
Well, Wally, if there is a backlog, I'd like to know about it. I had not heard anything about that, but I'd like to find out whether that's accurate or not. Alderman Braithwaite, you know, I mean, this is, you know, a difficult balancing act here, because what I believe the city manager was talking about is what's on the table is a bunch of things that involve staffing. And, you know, if we don't take advantage of opportunities that we have to increase revenue in ways that can be, again, not regressive to the residents, where they have a choice in decisions that they make, then, you know, that just creates additional problems. So if we cut staffing, then the...
The trickle-down effect, it just...
Exactly. It'll just come, and things will be delayed more. But again, I'm not, I'm not sure that delays are in fact happening, but I'd like to know if they are. I do think it is really important at this stage of the discussions not to send out a message to staff that they're unappreciated, or that, and I know no one is intending to do that. But I think we live in a community where a lot of, we have a very high expectation, not only as elected officials, but also as our city staff, for the kind of service we expect everyone to be providing. And you can go in a lot of other communities, and you won't get the same kind of responsiveness that you do here in Evanston, and I think we do a very, very good job of that. I remember when the city manager was being interviewed a long time ago, and Alderman Tendham and Alderman Rainey came back from California and said how beloved he was in his community, because staff loved him so much. And I think what we've seen here is that, I mean, Wally has done a number of things that show staff that they are appreciated. Maybe they're not paid the most, and maybe they have to work a little bit harder and have to put up with, you know, the kind of activist community that we are, but they're very appreciated. And I think those days that we give them for recognition, or the other, the other small benefits that Wally sends out, the thank yous that we can give them here at council are really important to me, because I don't ever want to feel that anyone doesn't appreciate being an employee here in Evanston, or doesn't think for a minute that we don't appreciate the fine work that you do for us and the community. So I just wanted to make sure that that was said.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Fisk. We're going to go to Alderman Rainey, and then I'm going to ask the city manager to go through the actual suggested modifications that he has.
Just very quickly, it seems to me we did a study of hotel tax at one time, including the B&amp;Bs, and I thought that our staff told us it would cost more to bill and collect the B&amp;B tax from the two B&amp;Bs than we would make. In other words, the cost and benefit didn't work out.
And Alderman Rainey, I also recall similar discussion, but I think that the Airbnb piece was included in that.
But the Airbnb is another...
And I think that there's been, time has passed since that last discussion, and I think staff is familiar with what other jurisdictions are doing, so we're happy to come back and provide...
But I'm just talking about our two B&amp;Bs.
Yeah, I think it was included with the others as well, but we can certainly resurrect that discussion.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Alderman Rainey. If we're going to put that on the table to have staff look at the B&amp;Bs, which I'm not necessarily supportive of, I have those same concerns, and I would want to quickly fold into the fact that they're not allowed to sell liquor. So if we're going to treat them like a hotel, I think they should be given all the rights and privileges as a hotel. So if we're going to look at that, then we need to open up the whole thing and not just tax them. It's just my straightforward opinion on it.
Alderman Fisk?
I think, and I may be wrong about this, I refer to the Corporation Council. I believe that B&amp;Bs do pay a state hotel tax, as do all of our hotels in Evanston. And I guess if I were going to make a recommendation, I would say anybody who's paying a state hotel tax here in Evanston ought to be subject to our local hotel tax as well. And I don't know whether that includes Airbnbs. I bet I'd like to know what the state is doing.
We'll have the city manager come back after some research on all of that. Alderman Saffron, and then let's get to the city manager presentation.
I just, I don't understand, how is it harder to tax buildings that are in Evanston than collect unpaid parking tickets from people scattered all over the United States? I don't, like, am I, did I miss something? Is there some pieces that I don't understand? How do you not walk over to the buildings and say, how many people are staying here? Okay, we'll tax you at this rate? Or Airbnb, there's a record. I don't, I, what did I miss?
And Alderman Saffron, you didn't miss anything. There's been a previous council discussion, and we're being asked this evening to revisit it. So there was just a previous council discussion at that point. It was decided not to pursue that, but the direction... So perhaps I can summarize, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, what I would like to do is come back to on August the 14th. We will talk with you regarding unpaid fines. We will propose an amnesty program, as has been outlined this evening. We will do some additional resource, research on Airbnb's bed and breakfast, the state hotel tax, what is applied, what's not applied. And then we will also have, perhaps we can, we'll just do this off agenda, the building permit, the backlog. So we'll just come back on the 14th, then with those two pieces, plus anything else we identify to make up the $200,000 gap. Again, we're proposing adjustments of a little over $3 million. So I'd like, if, it's all right, Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Lyons, if you'll indulge me, I'll run through what we have rather quickly, and we can stop and go into more detail if we need to. So whoever's got the clicker, if you can hand me the clicker, we'll, we, yeah. Mr. Lyons had an injury in his vacation time and is probably going to be out a little bit later in the weekend to next week after some surgery. So we, I told him he needed to be here any way possible, and thank you for being here this evening. So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we have this presentation. We've kind of gone through the overview of this already. We are proposing that we would, this is an overview of what we've already talked about. So with that said, the adjustments for the permit reductions we've talked about, the income tax shortfall, which we've talked about, sales tax shortfall, which we've talked about, utility tax shortfall, which we've talked about, and our expected revenue, that leaves us with a revenue shortfall of $4.3 million. Again, this is information we shared with you two weeks ago regarding building permit fees. We are going to watch this very closely as we continue through the year, and we think that the numbers that we are... that the numbers that we are providing you this evening are, are good numbers, the best that we know these various projects moving forward. The income tax shortfall, $790,000. 400 of that is the declining income tax receipts, and then the 10% reduction to the LGDF is a real reduction in accounting terms. Yes, we are going to see the cash ultimately, but through strict 12-month accounting, we're still going to have a reduction. The sales tax shortfall, I think we've talked about. Utility tax shortfall, we've talked about. And again, with the expected revenue, expected expenses, we see a deficit of $3,324,696,000. The council has decided not to move forward with this. And so, with the projected savings we are proposing this evening, we had been at the bargaining table with AFSMI, with FIRE, and with police. There was a 2.75 general wage increase on the table that would have been retro to January 1st. We are proposing to go back to the bargaining table and to work to see if that can be moved to 7-1-17. Again, that would be part of collective bargaining, but we hope in working with our union partners that we can come up with something that makes sense. We are then looking at different changes for the capital transfer reduction, the debt service transfer reduction, the fleet service transfer reduction. This was money that was going to be coming out of the general fund to those funds to reduce those reductions. We are proposing a transfer from the parking fund of $500,000, proposing a transfer from the general assistance fund. This is the fund that has the separate levy. We believe there is excess revenue in there of $150,000, which we could transfer. We're proposing a reduction of the city manager's contingency, which is budgeted at $200,000. We've been fortunate so far this year not to need that money, so we're proposing a $150,000 reduction there. We're proposing taking $200,000 of the $1.2 million advanced disposal settlement and using that to help us balance the budget. We are proposing to close 3-1-1 on Saturdays beginning September 1st.
We discussed that with, with Mr. Lyons earlier, and I just want to get clarification because originally, as we just talked about that, I received a phone call from a resident who thought the way you stated it is that we were actually taking $200,000 out of the settlement just to put in the general fund. And what Mr. Lyons explained to myself and Alderman Rue is that, that $200 represents money that's going into capital to help with the air monitoring. So, I just want to get clarification.
So, that's why it's a positive, but it, but it helps us balance the money that we need. So, we will still be spending it on the needs, but we're doing a little bit of accounting shuffling in order to do that.
Right. But just for clarification...
Yes, yes, sir. And I apologize if that was not clear.
No worries. Thank you.
Closing 3-1-1 on Saturday, something we've been thinking about for a while.
City manager, can we just, I'm sorry to interrupt you, because we do want to get through it. Alderman Rue Simmons just want to make a point.
So, to expand on that, are we certain that those funds from the waste transfer settlement are designated for the areas affected by the waste transfer?
The city council has not yet made that determination, but that is certainly the path that the council is on. But the council has not made that determination yet. So, this action is not, is not precluding that, but the city council has not made that determination yet.
Okay.
But I think it's safe to say, based on past conversations, it's, it's important to note for anyone paying attention who live in that area that that is the direction that we're, we plan to go.
That's correct.
As discussed with the 79th council?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
These discussions have been ongoing now for almost a couple of years, I think.
That's correct.
So, but this adjustment will allow us to, to relieve some issues in the general fund. 3-1-1 closing on Saturdays, 3-1-1, very, very successful program, not very well used on Saturdays. We feel that we can close on Saturdays and not have a significant impact on service delivery. And then finally, 1.5% reduction in non-personnel costs. So, we have broken down, we have broken down that dollar amount in each of the, of the departments. The expected year-end, we've been working with departments over several weeks, plus the 1.5% non-personnel costs. So, that takes us to $650,000 of new revenue through transfers, 2.472 million through expense changes. Then that gets us to the balancing issue here, so this number is off by $205,000. We will come back to you on August the 14th with additional discussions on that. But if we are able to fill that gap with the other adjustments that we've just detailed, that brings us to a surplus of $2,304. In addition, though, as I mentioned at the beginning of this discussion, additional policy changes, director approval required for all overtime, and we will then submit overtime, summary overtime reports after each, every two pay periods to administration and public workers, just for transparency, to let you know where we are with overtime, that we are instituting a hiring freeze effective today. We currently have 12 full-time vacancies, and so our intent is to hold those freezes. It will not be a, a, a solid hiring freeze. For example, the one staff member that works on Vital Records announced that she's leaving last week, so we need to continue to provide that service. So, as, we need to make those hires to continue critical services, we will do that. My approval will be required for all travel and training and for furniture fixtures and equipment purchases. And then, as we are looking at the budget planning, as I mentioned at the beginning of the discussion, really looking at this as a two-year issue through fiscal '19, we're going to look at the management structure in all departments. That was something I did not mention at the beginning, but to make sure that we have the right complement of manager positions as we go into the 2018 budget process. We plan to do a review of the city manager's office, Ministry of Services, and the law departments, staffing in 2018, and then the police department in 2019. I think for those of you who have been following city issues for the last several years, you know that we did an extensive look at the public works department and merged public works and utilities back together a few years back. We've done some additional changes in parks, recreation, and community services. We've already done adjustments early in my tenure here with finance and administrative services. The one large department we really have not given a deep, hard look at is the police department. And so, I'm proposing that as we work through 2018, that we would do that process, and we'll come back to you at later meetings to talk more in detail what that might involve. But then to have some additional changes for the police department budget perhaps beginning in 2019, we will once again engage citizens as well as our employees to get feedback in the '18 budget process. We'll do that during the month of September. And then, new to this year is a budget decision through an equity framework, and we have a draft of that document in your packet. Dr. FEM is here and can address that if you so like. But really, to really put anything that we're going to be proposing moving forward for 2018 and beyond through that equity lens, and, you know, we're, we're still working on exactly how we would report that back to you, but our intention is to ask ourselves those questions and be prepared to report to you as part of the 2018 budget process, those responses. Again, the budget calendar, which the council approved not too long ago, you'll notice we've set a date for the multimedia budget outreach event, which was so successful last year. We're going to be a two-hour television program where we talk and take questions from, I think we had three or four people in the audience last year, Marty, and a couple of folks called in and tweeted in, and we will, we will try that again. We got a lot of positive feedback from people who just learned, and so we feel, we feel committed to do that again, and so we'll do that on September the 13th, and then that'll take us through budget adoption right after Thanksgiving. So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I hope I didn't go through that too quickly. I think the council chose to focus on the points you were concerned about earlier. We think this makes sense. I want to really echo many of your comments regarding the importance of balancing. I think we want to make sure that we balance the burdens that our residents feel. We want to balance the hard work of our city staff. We want to be mindful of their work, their wages, their working conditions. But I'll face, I'll be honest with you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is hard stuff. Many, if we lay off one person next year, that'll be one more person in the state of Illinois laid off in solving their budget problems. So, stop and think about that for a second. So, we, we are committed to being fair, we are committed to being equitable, but it's tough. And in Illinois, for whatever reason, it's easier to just increase the burden on the taxpayer. That is not the direction of the city council. And so, my challenge and the staff's challenge moving forward over the next few months is to find that balance that is respectful to our taxpayers and respectful to our employees. And I, you have my commitment that we will do that. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank, thank you, city manager. Is there any, why don't you just, the discussion or that we need to have or the action that you need? I just want to make that clear to everybody up here.
The, the only thing we needed action on from the council this evening, the council's already declined to take action on it. So, with, with your concurrence, the remainder I can move forward with through this, we can, the transfers will be reflected in a, the next time we come to the council with a budget adjustment. We will go back to the bargaining table with the employee unions immediately. So, I think we have the ability to move forward on all of this, except the, the parking ticket changes, and we are committed to coming back to you on August the 14th then with discussion of the unpaid tickets, the amnesty, the taxation possibilities for Airbnb bed and breakfast. And then, I think we'll do the building permit information off agenda prior to the 14th, and if there's reason for discussion, we can certainly bring that to a future meeting. But I, I think that most of the issues, I, I don't believe there's a serious backlog, but I believe we should be explaining to you what we've been going through over the last few months.
Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, city, I'm Mr. Mayor and city manager. So, earlier, our, our first city council meeting this afternoon, 4 o'clock, was on the police body cameras. Is that something that's in our budget?
Not for the current year, it's not.
Okay.
We have, we have a grant...
But if we're looking at two-year budgeting, are we?
It, it is something we need to deal with.
Okay.
I, I think for those of you who are not present at the presentation, the police department did an excellent overview of their last 60 days of use with the body cameras. I, I think the police department has found that the body cameras make a lot of sense for many, many reasons, and I think the presentation this afternoon did a good job of explaining that. It would be my recommendation to the city council that we move forward. The challenge is going to be how we pay for it. So, as we look at new expenses for next year, right after whatever additional costs from our employee contracts, that next biggest expense in the general fund would be a contract, likely a contract with the provider for the, the cameras, and then likely an additional position at the police department. Again, for those who were there this afternoon, you saw examples of how these videos have to be edited. They have to, we have to blur out faces, we have to make other adjustments for various different reasons, and we'll likely take one full-time equivalent. So, that'll be a new position we would have to hire. I'm not anticipating that there are any other new positions we would have in next year's budget. So, we're packaging that all up. It, it is a multi-hundred-thousand-dollar commitment. I don't think it's over that. It's not more than $1 million, but given the budget challenges we're facing, it will be significant to reduce the budget and then find money in order to pay for body cameras and their support.
Okay. If there's no other discussion, we'll go on to the, to the consent agenda. Alderman Braithwaite, would you like to take us through, and if you could, don't mind starting with M1, and then through payroll, and as we've been doing at the last several meetings, we'll do a vote at that point, and then we'll go into the, to the bills list.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move item M1, approval of the minutes for the regular city council, June 26, 2007 meeting. It's been moved and seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Okay, go on to A1. Thank you.
All right. And I'm going to take these two items separate. So, item A1, payroll, June 26, 2017 through July 9, 2017, in the dollar amount of $3,252.87.41. It's for action.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Aldi Fleming. Can you do the roll, city clerk?
Alderman Suffertin?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Fleming?
Yes.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons?
Aye.
All right, payroll passes nine to nothing. All right, the bills list?
Item A2, bills list, July 27, 2017, in the dollar amount of $2,689.35. In addition to that, the credit card activity period ending May 31, 2017, in the dollar amount of $215.521.46. That's for action.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, could you take the, the roll, city clerk?
Alderman Suffertin?
Yeah.
Alderman Ravel?
She's not here.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons?
Aye.
All right, and that passes 7-1. Or, excuse me, 7-0 with one recusal.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move item A3.1, the sole source renewal of annual Cisco Smart Net software support contract, in the dollar amount of $54,445.68. I'd also like to move item 3.2, which is the agreement amendment for Northwestern Football Parking on the Evanston-Wilmatt Golf Course during home football games. I'd also like to move item 3 point, A3.3, which is a change order number one to the water treatment plant reliability improvements project, and that's going to be in the dollar amount of $35,611. It takes the 1.24, 100, excuse me, 1,247,000 to 1,282,611 cents. Item 3.4, which is a contract with Schroder and Schroder, Inc. for 2017 for the alley and street improvements, and that's going to be in the dollar amount of $1,301,882.10. I'd also like to move item A3.5 for action, contract with Bullion Andrews Concrete and Restoration for 2017 garage improvements, and that's going to be in the dollar amount of $237,354,000. I'd also like to move item A3.6, which is the Sidewalk Cafe for Furious Spoon at 1700 Maple Avenue. I'd like to make one amendment to that from Sunday, Thursday, 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m., and Friday, Saturday, that should read from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. Let's see, and that's for action.
Can you repeat that?
There's a typo for item A3.6.
11:00, 2:00 a.m.
Right there. So, in the last sentence... Thank you, Alderman. Friday, Saturday, 11:00 a.m. to, I believe that should be 2:00 a.m. All right? Item 3.7 is going to be off at Alderman Fisk's request. Item 8.4 is, excuse me, Resolution 65-R-17, creating a special fund entitled the Robert Crown Community Center Maintenance Fund. That's for action. Item A5, Resolution 66-R-17, professional services agreement with the James V. Moran Center for the 2017 Certificate of Rehabilitation, and that's going to be in the dollar amount not to exceed $30,000. Item A6, Resolution 64-R-17.
Aye.
Okay, that's going to be removed by Alderman Rainey's request. Alderman Rainey, would you also like to remove item A7 as well, or should we leave that on? Alderman?
Yes.
A, okay, so Alderman, I'm sorry, A6 and A7 at the request of Alderman Rainey. Item A8, which is Ordinance 73-0-17, amending the Title 10 Motor Vehicle and Traffic Chapter Schedule 17, Schedule, what is that, 1517, parking violation penalties. That was also voted off, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, A8 has been removed, A9 has been removed and voted down, and I believe A10 as well has been.
No, no.
No?
No.
Yeah.
A10 was good.
Oh, oh, okay, got it. Pardon me.
A13.
Pardon me. A10, which is Ordinance 69-0-17, amending the Title 7 Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 11, Traffic Schedule Section 18, Residence Parking Only District. That's going to be for introduction. A11 is Ordinance 70-0-17, amending the Title 10 Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 11, Traffic Schedule Section 18, Residence Parking Only Districts. That's going to be for introduction. I'd also like to move item A12, which is Ordinance 71-0-17, amending the Title 10 Motor Vehicle and Traffic, Chapter 11, Traffic Schedules, Section 18, Residential Parking, Residential, excuse me, Parking Only Districts. Again, that's for introduction. Item A13 is Ordinance 72-0-17 to amend Title 11 Administrative Adjudication, Chapter 2, Parking and Compliance Violation, Section 11B, the Immobilization Program. That's going to be also for introduction.
That was removed.
That's also removed?
Yes.
That was the third, just so we're clear, that was the third one that was removed at the APW meeting.
Got it, thank you. That's off. Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, I'd also like to move item A14, ordinance 58-0-17, amending the city code 7-2-5-3, permit fees to include block party regulations. That's for action. Item A15, ordinance 61-0-17, increasing the number of Class D liquor licenses for Furious Spoon, Evanston Maple Avenue LLC, doing business as Furious Spoon. That's for action. And then item A16, which is ordinance 62-0-17, increasing the number of Class K liquor licenses for Beer on Central LLC, doing business as Beer on Central, is for action. And the last item is ordinance 46-0-17.
Take that off.
Off. Okay, regulating small, got it. That concludes my report. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. With those modifications, do we have a motion?
Remove.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, City Clerk, could you take the roll?
Alderman Suffertin?
Yes.
Alderman, Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons?
Aye.
All right, the consent agenda with modifications passes eight to nothing. Alderman Braithwaite, you had a busy night tonight.
Yes, we do, and I may need some help to keep everything straight. The first one is going to be A3.7, which is the contract with Warren Langley for design and manufacture and installation of a lighted sculpture on Green Bay Emerson-Riz intersection. That's going to be in the dollar amount of $88,897.50, and that's going to be funded from the CIP Neighborhood Public Art Fund.
All right, Alderman Fisk?
Do we need a second?
Sorry. Sorry, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Alderman Fisk?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I asked for this to be taken off the consent agenda. I was surprised, I heard from a lot of people about this in my ward, and I am absolutely in favor of public art. It enhances our community and makes it even a more special place than it is. However, there were two concerns about this. The first is, now that we're into budget discussions, people are questioning money that we're spending that appears to be not directly connected to a practical public good. I don't know how better to say that. I realize that we have this money budgeted, that it's there, that this is part of a program that we have, but I find it increasingly difficult to explain to people when we have the ability to save $89,000 why we're not doing it. The other concern that I heard from people is, and this has been an ongoing, very serious concern, is about the, just the difficulties in this intersection, in trying to get through the intersection, the traffic considerations that make it increasingly difficult, especially during rush hours, and the addition of a lighted piece of sculpture of the size, the one that is proposed, is actually going to be a distraction in a very, very complicated intersection. So for those two reasons, I will be voting no.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Fisk. Alderman Wilson?
I do agree that it is, it's a challenge to explain to people sometimes these types of things in the budget context. But of course, we do have an ordinance that's on the books, and it does, it's not just kind of, it's not an option, it's a requirement. So projects like this require us to set aside a certain amount of money for the specific purpose. So I guess going forward, if we were going to make a change, that might be something to entertain, but as it is, it is in the ordinance. I do think it is something that makes the community, you know, a more interesting and pleasant place to be. I'm tired of, and, you know, Alderman Rainey's got a far, far more significant issue in her corner of the ward, of her ward, but these places need to get attention, and we really need to spend some time and focus on those. So I think it's important to follow through with our commitment. It is budgeted for, it is per ordinance, and we should go ahead and proceed with the, with this aspect of the project. It's one piece of a really big project.
All right, seeing no other lights, we have a motion to approve with a second for A3.7. Could I have a roll call, City Clerk?
Alderman Suffertin?
No.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Nope.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons?
Aye.
Okay, A3.7, the Emerson sculpture under the interchange there passes eight, excuse me, passes six to two. Okay, Alderman Braithwaite?
Yes, I think, what am I, on?
We're A6, I think we have A6, and then A7, they're sort of related.
Yep, yep, yep. So we'll take A6 first. Resolution 64-R-17, authorizing the city manager to execute TIF Forgivable Construction Loan and Development Greeting with Harrington Brown LLC for the proposed development at 10128 Chicago Avenue.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Do you want a second first?
I'll second.
Oh, excuse me, I keep messing that up today. Yes, do I have a second?
I'm seconding that.
For discussion, yep.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, for those of you who were here during the Administration and Public Works Committee meeting, you heard a great deal of controversy and concern regarding the use of the million dollars recommended by the city to purchase four units of affordable housing in this project. I, for one, was very supportive of it. However, in discussions with the developer, I think we've come to a solution that I hope you will support, and hopefully we can save this magnificent project. Magnificent is my word, and I hope you'll support the project. We are proposing a massive amendment to this project, and that is that we delete all reference to the million-dollar purchase of the four units for affordable housing. We are, period, eliminate all references to the million dollars to write down the cost of the four units. However, to explain, the project remains the same. There will be 24 units. The developer will retain his five units of required affordable housing on-site. The request will be only for the TIF appropriation of $1,959,946, which reduces the public requests to .249. In other words, 25%, and that's it. The parking lot will be purchased, the reduction from the city's commitment to pay for the remediation brings the parking lot cost down to, I don't know what, the parking lot, it's in the 7,839,786 is the cost of the project, and the 25% is the $1,959,946. The cost of the parking lot is in that minus the 110,000 for remediation. So the parking lot will be restored, refurbished, and returned to the city as public parking, and everything remains the same, except we're not accepting the million dollars for affordable housing. There will now be five units of affordable housing, and the city's Affordable Housing Fund, once the 831 Emerson project comes on board, will have $2.4 million in it for, I know the Affordable Housing Group wants to, you know, define and design a process, and I hope that I can get a second for this amendment, and then David Brown, the developer, would like to address the amendment.
Second.
Thank you. And I know Alderman Fleming has some questions also, but I think maybe it would be good for him to, yeah, if that's okay with everybody.
Okay, speak.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. First again, thank you, everyone. We have presented, and we thank you for the opportunity, that we've presented both to the Economic Development Committee last month, and then earlier this evening to the Administration and Public Works Committee. I think it's been a very productive, lively discussion, and to be honest with you, I'm surprised by some of the twists and turns of the discussion. We, I don't know if the presentation is available, just to show some pictures for those of you who are not party to that meeting, and I'll just take the turn. So to be quite frank, I was surprised that we've been working for seven months on this project, and we've been trying to, with Lamanda Joy, who is with the Peterson Garden Project, and what we are proposing for this site that you're all very familiar with is to create what would be the nation's first education-centric urban garden center, lifestyle center, along with some retail, that would probably include a coffee shop with it. Our hope, and my hope, as someone with a background in public policy and housing and community development, was to work with Lamanda Joy and her vision for what would be a wonderful green garden center, center of activity in a place that currently does not have it. Our vision for this, along with Lamanda, was that this should also encompass on-site affordable housing in a new building that's serviced by elevators, would be quite suitable for seniors. We've heard many of the discussions that you all have had here, as well as some of the public commentary about a shortage of affordable housing in the city of Evanston, and my personal view, my personal opinions, is that projects like this should include affordable housing on-site, as opposed to many of the developers I think that you are used to speaking with that would rather pay into the fund. So we came to, we've worked with staff for the last seven months, it's been a great collaborative process, we've been through a number of different scenarios, but all along, we've tried to put together a project that we thought would really embody great urban planning, the missions that we have jointly for this retail presence, which will be nationally groundbreaking, and it'll be something that everyone would be in love with. The upper floors, really from the beginning, have been intended to help create a little bit more critical mass for the social enterprise of the garden center, and we thought it would be, and then the city came to us and said, not only will you comply with the inclusionary housing ordinance, but would you also consider using funds from the Affordable Housing Fund instead of paying into the Affordable Housing Fund and provide even more affordable units on-site? To that, we said yes. So our proposal was to have nearly 40% of the units at an affordable level, and the surprising part was, that's what caused the controversy, was our proposal to construct a project on a long, underutilized, blighted, environmentally contaminated site, and to include on-site affordable housing that we thought would be very much welcomed. That was not the case. So we are under considerable time pressures to pull together the land acquisition, and so I think, you know, our last hope of trying to keep this together, again with the driving force being what you see on the ground floor here, which is, will be a wonderful addition to the gateway of the city, is that I know that you've struggled a little bit with the affordable housing policy and how to make it work, and I think as Alderman Rainey said, if it makes people more comfortable, in a very odd way to me personally, to delete that completely from our proposal, I would love to have you consider it and vote on that for this evening. I think one clarification to Alderman Rainey's comment is that what we suggested was, since you as a body and committees have continued to struggle with the affordable housing piece of this, is that we would keep it very simple and just say that our project, because we have not gone through the zoning and the site plan approval process, is that we would just comply with the inclusionary housing ordinance as it is written. So.
Alderman Fleming?
So I have a couple of questions for you, and then I have some questions for our staff. So if you're going to comply, well, one, let me just clarify, and I can understand your frustration, I don't think that any of us are against affordable housing. I think you have to understand that it was a little bit of a shock for me to see that, you know, you wanted so much Affordable Housing Fund, and we hadn't had a discussion about it. So it wasn't that I'm anti-affordable housing, it's just that it was a big question and a small amount of time to think about. So since you will comply with the ordinance, are you still requesting the variance to have the units at 80% AMI, or will you go down, or will you go down on some of the units or all of the units to what the ordinance asks for, which I think is at 60?
I think, I think at this point, I think it's simplest for us to just say we will comply with the requirements of the zoning and the ordinance, you know, that are, we have not submitted a, my zoning attorney is here, so, but we have not submitted a formal request for the zoning and planning and site development program. We have done numerous zoning analyses, so there will be some requests for some variances based on this project. We have not, you know, run the numbers, but again, I'm personally an advocate for affordable housing in a mixed income project that doesn't seem to have the support, and so I think it's easiest just to go with the, what you have on the, in your ordinance.
Okay. And then my second question, I guess maybe as far as the city manager can help me understand this. So it seems to be that Mr. Brown started this process, which I'm assuming maybe was with Johanna because she was in economic development.
Correct.
Several months ago, and was led to believe that this was a feasible option. And so I guess I'm trying to understand our process within the city, in which I would hope that our staff is not kind of selling something as a done deal before it gets to council, because I understand Mr. Brown's frustration if that was the case, and I apologize if that was the case. I do think that we need to figure out our affordable housing policy, which we did talk about in our council goal setting, to have a longer discussion about. Obviously, you weren't privy to that, so that's not on you, but I guess my concern, or if the city manager can explain, or if Johanna's here and can explain, kind of how this developer came so strongly to be sold on the idea that we were going to approve a million dollars without a little more conversation, and maybe that's a rhetorical question that I wanted to just state publicly, but I would hate for us to have developers out there, and then they get to council and get kind of a big surprise.
I would like to answer that if possible. I would say that throughout, from the beginning, it's been a great working relationship with the staff and with the aldermen. We were not led to believe in any way, we made our own assessment based on our own beliefs of what we thought was policy objectives of the city of Evanston for affordable housing.
That's fine. And then I also just wanted to go on record to voice that I understand it's not a done deal yet either, but the $300,000 that you'll apply for, I guess that the garden center would apply for, for CDBG, I guess I want to just reiterate that that is a process, so that we are not having a similar discussion whenever we get there, that there was any kind of... kind of, is there any kind of assumption that that's a done deal, right? I would hate for this, if it went forward, to then become, well, we can't open the garden center because we were, you know, counting on the $300,000 from CDBG, because that's an entirely different process.
I mean, not to, I will speak for Lamanda, but she has a very detailed business plan for what is a transformation of an existing nonprofit into a social enterprise that is a for-profit organization. One of our challenges from the beginning, because this all came about through her organization and her vision for creating this at this site, I was brought into it by her to try to help facilitate this. So, I will say that one of the challenges is to make the numbers work on a social enterprise, although it is a for-profit social enterprise, you know, charging full market rents, you know, we've, we have tried, Lamanda has tried to be creative in her business planning as well. And her social mission is to, a number of the other things that I've heard the council discuss tonight, hiring at-risk youth, hiring veterans, really having an educational program for people to learn to grow what they eat and eat what they grow. This is all wonderful stuff, which is why she convinced me to work with her to be part of this. So those pieces are a critical part of her business plan. We understand that they'll have to be addressed at a later date. I think Lamanda is fine with that. But they are, you know, our understanding of that is that job creation funds are designed to create jobs in full, and then Lamanda would have to be in full compliance with those regulations. So, certainly happy to address that at a later date.
Thank you. And I have one last question, I'll release the microphone. So Marty, can you just remind us, I think you mentioned this earlier, but how, so we would have to go to bonding for the 1.9. How long, well, what is our interest rate on bonding? And then how long will it take for, what is our assumption in terms of when this money will be available for us to, you know, pay off the bond through the TIF?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Clerk Reed. Alderman Fleming, page 292 thereabouts, has a table, and so what we have to do is pay interest only for the first three years, then the tax increment will show up, and then we will have a level debt schedule that will be paid off from the tax increment associated with the growth in the INPIN, a new term I learned from this project, but from the actual development, and then also the growth in the TIF itself. So the TIF itself is going to help pay for this in a large portion, because 415 Howard, that development agreement will fall off, and there will be available funds. But it does have to be end-loaded, which we do not normally do, but we, the only time we would look at it would be in a TIF or in a development situation. We are doing something similar in Chicago, Maine, and Dempster Dodge, where the first few years, we've been limping along with letters of credit, lines of credit, until both of those two major projects developed an increment. And again, that means that it will not affect any other taxpayer outside the district. So, short answer is, it'll go the length of the TIF and be done, per those two worksheet pages.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if you might be able to come back, just a couple of quick comments. I am going to be supportive of this. I think, and my reasons are this, I think it was a great project from the first time we heard it at economic development. I was on the fence, and my concern was not so much the mix on how you got there, but just the high percentage. And I think by taking off the million dollars out of the Affordable Housing Fund and your commitment to still participate in the inclusionary housing is a huge testament, testimony to your commitment to affordable housing in the city of Evanston, so I just want to say thank you for that. My other reasons is it reduces, from what I had calculated originally, to somewhere between 38 to 40%, brings us now in line at 25%, which is a number that I think we are used to digesting on a regular basis, so thank you for that. So that, along with the contributions to the TIF, the increase of property values, and I think Alderman Rainey, you talked about that before, it will help increase the property values around those condominiums that are west of Chicago Avenue, again, contributing again to the TIF. The thought of jobs, the idea of the garden, makes this a very, very attractive project to the gateway of Evanston, so I appreciate the, you know, on-the-spot adjustments to make this thing happen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Wilson?
You mentioned in passing a coffee shop. That's not that you're gonna, like, not gonna put a Starbucks or a Caribou or something like that, or?
No. The proposal that we have with Lamanda's social enterprise is for the entire ground floor to be leased to her, as well as the yard space that you see in this image here. Her vision for really creating this garden center, which, don't think of it as a typical garden center, it's really an educational urban lifestyle center, with food being a part, an important part of that. She has had some discussions with specific partners of hers who want to be part of this with a small cafe or a coffee shop that's integrated into her occupation of the ground floor.
Okay. I'm trying to kind of adjust my math and looking at this on the fly with the affordable housing part of it. I think, if I'm looking at the materials, it looked like your projected return was about 5.8% without the incentives, is that?
It was quite low, yes.
Okay. And the target is 12%? Is that?
What we started with, yes.
Okay. It looks like?
We did not get there.
Okay, I can see that. So, I'm seeing your rough projection here is 10.7, 10%, but that includes the, that was including the million dollars and some other incentives that aren't a done deal.
This may turn me into a nonprofit.
Okay, well, so did you rough out what your return is without the other incentives?
We have not had the time in the last 45 minutes.
Figured not, okay. Nor did I, okay. All right, thanks.
Alderman Rainey?
I just wanted to remind the council that the lot at 100 Chicago Avenue is going to be placed on the tax rolls, which it has never been on the tax rolls since it was a gas station, whenever that was. The city parking lot is going to be on the tax rolls. Also, one of the points I made in the note that I sent individually to Alderman, not all at the same time, is that the current taxpayer, non-tax, the current owner of the property has not paid taxes since 2012. And so, if you can find it in your, possible to vote for this, we will have a responsible taxpayer finally on this property, and that'll be a good thing, so, appreciate it.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Alderman Ruth Simmons?
I'm gonna agree with Alderman Rainey, this project is magnificent, and I have been excited about it since you first presented it. Just wanted to look at ways for it to make sense for us. So I'm gonna be voting in agreement with the amendment. I think that it responds to all the goals that we talk about here, environmental goals and socially conscious business and affordable housing. But I don't think that to question our commitment to affordable housing is really the right response. We have families, and we have folks that are disabled, and seniors, and a city that we need to consider for affordable housing. So, thank you for making the adjustments, and I'm gonna be voting in support of it.
Thank you.
So I have a question. With this adjustment, removing the million dollars or so from the Affordable Housing Fund, you're confident that you can deliver this project?
We, confident? I think we've had confidence all along that we would, or hope, I guess. You know, these are always subject to, you know, financing, which would be a combination of debt financing, equity financing. I think that we're going to need to get creative around there as well. I think I mentioned at the Economic Development Committee meeting last month, we've also initiated conversations with a couple of, you may be familiar with the Illinois Facilities Fund or the Community Investment Corporation, who have some attractive financing options available for mission-based real estate development projects. If, you know, I have a meeting with them tomorrow morning, so we'll have to get creative, and we're hopeful.
Thank you.
It's got us this far, I guess.
Great, thank you. Well, seeing no more lights on and no more discussion, we have a motion that was seconded to approve.
Amendment.
Excuse me, the, well, yep. Alderman, what?
I just, I have one other question. This is not necessarily for you, Mr. Brown. Alderman Rainey, are there, I'm looking at the, that this is using up the TIF funds. In terms of, and we've talked a lot about, and I'm not necessarily opposed to this project, I'm just asking for information, we've talked a lot about doing additional things on Howard Street in terms of streetscape, and improving the appearance, and improving the viaduct there. Are there other uses that have been contemplated for the TIF funds that this would then preclude?
Actually, there have not. We have been blessed by the big $2 million Howard streetscape that is, we're having a big meeting on the 2nd of August, as a matter of fact, that the state of Illinois has actually funded. And it's coming down Howard Street from Dodge Avenue on both sides of the street, Chicago and Evanston. And that's going to include streetscape. We, our streetscape on Howard Street is in pretty good shape, it's just going to be spruced up a little. But, yeah, I mean, we're all set. All the money for the theater is in the bank, that's all taken care of. And, yeah, I mean, we're waiting for Peckish Pig to buy their building, that's in the works. Ward Eight has purchased their building. The theater in beginning next year will be paying rent on their property. We're, you know.
All right, that's the information I need, thank you.
We're hoping, we're hoping that finally, the, you know, the private market will take over. Sherwin-Williams is for sale.
Okay, thank you.
All right, seeing more, no more lights, then, is, there's a motion to remove the Affordable Housing Fund from this, from this project, the million dollars, or to be exact, the $1,055,000 from this project, and there was a, and there was a second?
One million.
Just one mil?
It's just one million.
Okay. To remove 1 million, is that a, okay.
You treating this as one motion, or are we voting on the amendment first?
We're gonna vote on the amendment, we're gonna vote on the amendment first. So, the amendment is to remove the Affordable Housing Fund from this project, from Resolution 64-R-17. Okay, is there a motion for that, and a second?
Second.
There was, okay. Can we do a roll call vote, clerk?
Alderman Sufferton?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
All right, so that amendment passes seven to one. Okay.
Back to the main motion.
Back to, okay, back to the main motion. Do we have a?
I'll move item, Resolution 64-R-17, that authorizes the city manager to execute the TIF forgivable construction loan and development agreement with Harrington Brown LLC Development at 10120 Chicago Avenue with the proposed amendment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, city clerk, can we do a roll call?
Alderman Sufferton?
No.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
No.
Alderman Ruth Simmons?
Aye.
All right, the Resolution 64-R-17, with that amendment, passes six to two. Okay, Alderman Braithwaite, A7?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move item A7, Ordinance 67-0-17, authorizing the city manager to negotiate with Harrington Brown LLC for the sale of city-owned real property located at 100 Chicago Avenue. This is actually for introduction and action.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I would like to ask those members of the council who voted no on the previous motion or resolution to support this, because it is part and parcel of the other resolution, and since it passed, I'm not sure what point would be made by their voting against this.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Wilson?
I agree with you. While I didn't support the project, it did pass, and there's no reason, I think, to hold it up unduly in light of the fact that the project passed, so I would hope that we could unanimously complete the proceeding.
All right, thank you. And otherwise, if you're not able to support the project, if Alderman Sufferton, if you wouldn't oppose suspending the rules.
Okay, seeing no more lights up here, there's a motion to approve Ordinance 67-0-17, authorizing the city manager to negotiate with Harrington Brown LLC for the sale of city-owned property, real property located at 100 Chicago Avenue. The motion was moved and seconded. City clerk, could you take the roll call on this?
Alderman Sufferton?
No.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
All right, A7 passes seven to one. All right, Alderman Braithwaite, I think, you could probably take A8 through, if you need to, A8, A9, and A13, they're all removed, they never made it up to the council.
That is correct.
Okay, so A, so we move to A17.
Yep.
Excuse me, A17.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move Ordinance 46-0-17, amending the City Code Section 9-5-15, regulating small unnamed, oh, excuse me, unmanned aircraft in the city of Evanston. It's for action.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Alderman Wen?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to address some of the comments that were made this evening, and some of the comments that I've received in the mail. I think many people don't understand that if you are operating a drone for commercial purposes, there are FAA regulations, there are federal regulations which govern that operation. I believe that, I would be very surprised if Northwestern does not fall under the commercial operation process, and I'd also like to point out that our water treatment plant is a homeland security site, and so no drone can be flown over it at any time. And then, and also, I think we have landscape services that have the permission of the property owner to photograph their property, then that's permitted underneath this, under this ordinance. So just this evening, I heard two more stories from people, actual, accurate events that occurred, where someone was playing on the tennis courts over at Burnham Shores, which is right at the end of Dempster, and a drone fell out of the sky and landed next to him on the tennis court. Now, I've also heard of another instance where a drone Now, I've also heard of another instance where a drone fell out of the sky. I mean, these things don't just land gracefully, and they do have failures, and they are operated by hobbyists who just take them out of the box. So, and we don't have anything that stops them from flying over schoolyards where children are present. We don't have them from, we don't have anything on our books that stopped them from flying over large gatherings or above private property. I've had instances of residents in my ward who live on the seventh floor of buildings have drones fly outside their condos in the evening. I am all for new technology. I have a brother who's a pilot who builds general aviation airplanes. He's at Oshkosh right now. But I am also for protecting people's privacy, especially children's. And we don't have that right now. And I think I am going to continue to hear about these issues, and I don't want anyone, I want people to be able to stop someone from flying a drone over their private property. I want people to be able to prevent, I want the city to be able to prevent drones from flying over schoolyards when school is in session. I want to make sure that we have some kind of regulation. Hobbyist, hobby drones, that means non-commercial, are not regulated. The FAA does not have regulations on these right now. And I think these are intelligent regulations that we should put in place. So I am asking for your vote for all of this. And next time I get a complaint, I'll make sure every one of you hear about it.
Okay, seeing no further, further lights, we have Ordinance 46-0-17, has been moved and seconded. City clerk, could you take the roll?
Alderman Sufferton?
No.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ruth?
No.
All right, the Ordinance 46-0-17 does not pass on a vote of five to three. Okay.
Three to--
Well, it, yeah, it failed, it failed to pass on a vote of five to three. Okay. Okay, call, call of the wards. Alderman Sufferton?
I was gonna request that Mr. Lyons provide an update on his taxes and property analysis that he had done at our next meeting where his health would permit him to make such a presentation, so that it's not our next scheduled meeting, whenever that may be.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Rainey?
I just want to say that I was conflicted on the drone vote for a variety of reasons. I've been involved with a drone lately and found it absolutely fascinating. On the other hand, I'm concerned about your drone issues, but I think there's got to be another way to deal with it. So I want to thank everybody on our staff and everybody on the council for making this project happen. I know this developer is going to figure this out, and it's going to be really amazing. So thank you very much. I'll never forget your votes.
Alderman Fleming?
Can you write that down? You'll never forget my vote.
I never will.
So I have two announcements. Well, one is a request of staff that I would like, and maybe this exists somewhere, I would like a document produced that shows me the process of us approving a development. So where it starts, and obviously where it ends, we know, is yes or no. So all the committees and such that it needs to go to, so that would be great. And then the second one is that August the 1st, the, when am I, the 9th Ward and the 8th Ward are having a combined National Night Out. Ridgeville is allowing us to have it at Cayman Park West, which is on Barton and South Boulevard, so there'll be some food trucks, bounce houses, DJs, all kind of great activities. So that's open for everyone in the community, obviously, but we particularly would like the 9th and 8th Ward people to come over and enjoy dinner with us.
Great, thank you, Alderman Fleming. Alderman Fisk?
No.
Alderman Braithwaite?
No.
Alderman Wen?
Yes, unfortunately, I have to cancel my town hall meeting that's scheduled for this Thursday evening. I have had, I have a family emergency that is developing, and I won't be able to be there. I would like to make a reference about developing a policy regarding additions to private lakefront property. We have a number of people who are becoming interested in adding seawalls or groynes or something additional onto their lakefront property, and we don't have a city policy about that. This isn't a large number of people, but it does affect all of the lakefronts, so I would like to make that reference to the planned commission.
Great. Alderman Wilson?
To reiterate, the mayor mentioned the temperance meeting, I'm sorry, not meeting, but the event at Temperance tomorrow night, which is a more informal opportunity to kind of get a chance to chat with the mayor and myself, and don't really know what to expect, but it should be interesting and fun, so--
And we get to have a beer.
Yes. And beyond that, no further report.
Great. Alderman Ruth Simmons?
Thank you. I'd like an acknowledgement from staff that the waste transfer station cannot be, operations cannot expand. They're demolishing a building there that's going to be turned into green space, and I just want an official statement that they cannot expand operations of their waste Additionally, we will be celebrating National Night Out. As a note, we are moving the location from Church and Dodge Parking Lot to Twigs Park. We will enjoy house music and family fun. All are welcome. And lastly, on August 2nd, myself, Alderman Fleming, Commissioner Sufferton, and the City of Evanston are gonna be hosting a tax appeal session. It's gonna be August 2nd here at the city in the council chambers, 6:30 PM, and additionally on August 3rd, 6:30 PM at Northwestern at the Norris Center. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, Alderman Wilson, can you lead us into executive session?
Yes. Pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, ILCS 120/2A, I move that the City Council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding personnel, collective bargaining, litigation, and minutes. The agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. These exceptions are five ILCS 120/2A, C1, C2, C11, and C21.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn? Second? All in favor? Thank you for your stamina. All right.